Well, that's her recording and not us recording. Have we done dual recordings before? Joined after you've done the recording. They're with us, everybody. We're having recording issues, so. Want to get that done before we start? Yeah, she started recording fifteen minutes ago, but I don't know that we have access to the recording.
No, but it says ours is recording now. And yeah, but ours is showing it too. Looks like it's recording.
Well, it says recording because it popped up when she started recording. Someone is recording. I just don't know that we're gonna have access.
No, no, it should because when we get done, it'll ask you want to save or whatever. It shows that it is recording.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and if it doesn't work, we'll know better next time. Ten o'clock, we'll call the morning workshop to order. The ten o'clock update is Public Works Director Jeff Hunter.
Red sir. Okay, we have a few things on your consent agenda. All of them are related to federally funded bridge projects. Wash dot really enjoys their paperwork. So item seven, eight, and nine are. There are. They're basically our local agency agreements for those projects. Ten, eleven, and twelve are other prospectus instead of putting those on one thing. We gotta have two. One is the agreement. One is the prospectus. So there's three of those bundles, hence three each, so six projects. We can get into those, but they're pretty lengthy. So we also have a pay estimate today wireless and the amount of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This is for. The Satis Tower Pass project. On the construction side, Rock Creek Bridge pre-construction conference is scheduled for this Wednesday. So and we're scheduled to start Monday. Annual striping thermoplastic and crosswalk bars will be placed this month. And we continue to work on the traffic counts on roadway design, curb warning signs and guideposts. Wash dot has reviewed the bids and approved our contractor. They have to do that, and so we'll have it on the consent agenda to award next week. Data collection staff is still working with the consultant to complete their paperwork. Pickleton Highway paper, construction plans are complete. Or just and construction funding documentation will be on the consent agenda for next week to get that project starting to move ahead. Sundale, the package, the right away packages have been complete. They'll soon go over for review. And then they'll be mailed to the landowners and we'll start scheduling meetings with the landowners. Bridge bundle, like we talked about, bridge bundle projects are on the consent agenda this week. Small works guardrail contract. We'll talk about that. We may add to that a little bit.
How long are those bids usually out, by the way?
For.
I mean, when you put like the guardrails out to bid, how long does it?
Usually two to three weeks. I'll just jump to that since we were on the guardrail. We had guardrail burned up. At on the fire and there is not going to be any money for that. So what we'll do is it's a maintenance thing, so we'll just, we were planning on rock and sand ridge road this year. We'll just shove that off to next year and replace the guardrail. That's how that works. Was giving you the heads up because there'll be some person that won't be very excited about that, but. I, you know, my tree died, so I don't have any extra money, so. Let's see Snowden project is on still working forward on the maintenance side. East Market Street was B S T yesterday in Bickleton. They're working on West Market so that the car show can go on as planned. West Side is working on the Bickleton Highway reconstruction also, so we have everybody own Bickleton still. On the facility side sidewalks and ramps, the first pour is this week tomorrow is one pour and then Thursday will have a second pour. And then two pours next week. HVAC units, health and weed unit modifications are complete. It's much quieter down there. The sheet rock is being installed by our carpenters. In between the pouring of the sidewalks. Picture picture installation is all complete. Jailhouse roof surprisingly, which is. They actually moved, they got done, the contractor got done, so we actually moved the schedule forward, which is unheard of. Usually we move the schedule back. But they're gonna start Monday instead of before Labor Day, I'm still have set after Labor Day. And another good, we got the the jail dryers actually on schedule. It will be installed today. Spirit Court hasn't changed events fair was a success. A lot of people in our group stepped up, stepped outside of their realm and helped clean and do a lot of other things to make sure fair went off. And I believe fair went off really well. Annex four is complete. Nothing new on the fuel island sadist pass. Equipment installation will be complete this week. Generator commissioning is today. And the grounding halo, which is the grounding inside the building, not the grounding outside will be completed next week. And then we're just on hold waiting for the rest, the. Thermodynamic grounding when the weather gets a little bit better. Okay, other issues, we lost the compressor and dispatch. Yeah, I was fifty-one hundred dollars to replace it. I told them they had to do it. We'll figure out where to, you know. I'll see, I think we have some extra money that we didn't spend in small tool or in in. Supplies and that's for that purpose, but they have no ventilation. I couldn't wait. They said, you know, you guys, we gotta replace it. I mean, there's no other alternative. So they don't have any right now. What they've done is it's a split system, so they've cranked up the units down to the brand new unit we put downstairs and the units inside. But we can't, that's not good for those.
Say you can burn them up.
Yes, so that gets installed to, I think today they're gonna put the new compressor, but those things are not expensive, are not cheap. And you're paying those guys to come all the way over from Spokane to do it. It's our on call. Luckily, we have an on call. They're not cheap. But they're our maintenance contractor. They typically don't. They have a construction end, which is nice for us. But their construction is very expensive. We could get it done a lot cheaper if we could have went to bid, but I can't go to bid. I mean, I.
Time is money.
Exactly. Okay, a couple other things. We'd like to place no overnight parking signs on it in annex four. Because we have people camping there. Now, I'm not really sure and I'll have to talk. I mean, we could put the signs there. But to get the city to write a ticket, I think we actually have to have an ordinance. But we'll try with the signs first. Well, that's the thing. I gotta talk to the city, see if the city has an ordinance, and I don't know that they have ordinances, but it's private property. So I still think we could, you know, use private property rights, I would think. To prevent that, so we're gonna try with no overnight parking start with, because we do have a couple people. We had one.
But what about the the other one? Are we just doing annex four? Are we gonna do the others?
Well, right now annex four is our problem.
Cause it's kind of hidden.
Yeah, it's kind of hidden and we're hoping, you know, once. Once they health gets, you know, gets in the building, they start getting things filled up. There's a little more activity and then, you know, people be less likely to camp there. But they camp in that back lot, you know, under those trees, you know, it's shady and nobody really notices. We've run them out a couple times. Same person. But the other day I went by there and now they multiplied. We have a second person. In a car. So it's time we start doing something to try to get them out there. So that's what we're gonna do. Okay, I see where commerce has E V charging stations. So something we want to pursue. Or they're gonna have all this. Tons of funding. I have not looked into it yet. I know when White Salmon did it. You know, ultimately they don't want them in just one location. And they're gonna pay to have them put in, but who pays for the power? I could look a little more into it, but then I I'll come back and ask for direction. I mean, because you get the money for a grant, doesn't mean long term that it.
Well, I would imagine we would also need to own the property we're putting it on, correct?
Exactly.
So I don't.
Or have some sort of control, work out something with somebody, but.
I think the writing is on the wall that with what Washington is ordering. By twenty thirty, we are going to be required to buy fleet vehicles that are E V. So if we can get grants now, because. Once twenty thirty rolls around, they'll stop giving the grants and it's just a requirement. We need to get on board and as much as I hate it, I think we have to.
That's why I wanted to bring it to the attention, so I'll look into it and see. You know, see what the requirements are. I know they have. They've got like three sets of funding they have laid out. You are right. They go almost through the twenty thirty. They stop at twenty twenty-eight. Right as of now, commerce has got the funding, but it's just to put in the station. It's not to pay for the station. And the problem, you know, here has worked out well because everybody uses the things, but at first, you know, we had a tough time finding like a. A contractor to actually run the, because we don't have enough. Use, but now these guys are fine because the somebody's charging all the time up there, which I was.
Downstairs.
Downstairs, yeah. I was surprised. So the contractor's happy. They're making money off.
We should have put all along that whole front when we did one on one side, we should have done the whole thing and just laid it out there for the future. Now you gotta go back and tear everything up.
I would disagree with that because when we did it, we paid for it.
Right, but it's really cheap to run the conduit so that you can lay it in there in the future. It's a conduit. It's cheap.
But I'll check into it more. I know White Salmon did it or was gonna do it. They get got it and then they all of a sudden. Commerce came back or the state came back and said, well, we don't want them just in white salmon. We want them on a whole corridor. Well, they don't have the rights to put them on fourteen. That's wash dot score. And they don't have any property. So I don't know how that's gonna work. They they want them.
No, White Salmon has all those parking lots. They have all those.
But they also wanted them to tie it into, you know, from go west to or east to like. Go west to the edge of the county and then go east to like Lyle to Dallasport. And why Sam's like, look, we don't have the ability to go there.
That's outside of jurisdiction.
Exactly. Well, work with the county and well, we don't have the, they're right away. State's right away. It's not our right. You can't, I can't help you there. Well, we want them along fourteen. Like, okay, then talk to Washington. We don't have the ability, but I'll look into it and bring back some.
Look it into it for at least our building.
Yes, and see what we can, what we can do in our facilities. Okay, um, hand sanitizer. We final or well, we haven't finalized anything. I'm just gonna let you know what the cost is. Actually, so after we've worked with Republic. And the total cost is the total cost they gave Jeff. So ultimately we have a pallet. Which is buildings and grounds and. Seniors, we've collected senior stuff. So there's three departments that have hand sanitizer. Buildings and grounds, seniors, and of course, emergency management.
What about health? What health do they have a bunch?
Yeah, I don't know. I think they used all theirs. I'll talk with Aaron today.
I don't know that they had the stockpile. I think Jeff was having.
Yeah.
While for them and handing them out as needed.
Yeah, I, you know, we got it because we couldn't get any anyplace else. So we got our own. Our stockpile was small. Comparatively speaking, because we gave, you know, we were get divvying it out to departments too. So ultimately, the bottom line is is the cost is eighteen thousand, six hundred.
To what? To to get rid of hand sanitizing?
Yes.
Cause it's hazardous waste?
Yes. And you gotta put it in a, you gotta put it on a pallet and everything else. That's the total cost they gave Jeff and then they said, well, yours is so small, you'll just throw it in. Said, okay, to make it fair. What is, we have about a pallet's worth. So we should pay a fifth of the cost. It's only right.
Send it back to the state.
I don't know where it's going.
Cause we got it from the state for free, right?
I get that, but they're not gonna take it back. So I guess you could just drive it to Olympia and throw it out on the Capitol steps if you want, but.
Are you signing up for this? Cause I will, I will drive with you.
This is your idea.
So ultimately, Public Works will pay thirty-seven hundred dollars and Jeff would pay the rest. The fifteen thousand goes, because they have a ton X box full of this stuff. They got tons of this stuff compared to what we have. We have one pallet and that's us and seniors together.
Yeah, I can think of other ways to dispose of it, just not on a microphone.
I'm just giving you the heads up. We don't have to move on it yet, but.
So is it like timing out?
Oh, yeah. His stuff is expired.
Okay, yeah, it's expired. You're not gonna get rid of it. The prices are only gonna go up to dispose of it. It needs gone. It's a safety hazard storing the stuff. So unless you got another big idea on how to get rid of it, we need to just get rid of it and be done with it, but this. Elephant behind us, so I'm all in favor of moving forward with that. Based on my seatmates' opinions.
No other option.
We checked with other people. And to be honest with you, we, you know, this is the best deal we got. And I think part of it was because Commissioner Christopher went and talked to him. And.
Wait, so they came down on the price? Was it even more?
They gave us a good deal.
It's it's expensive.
Is essentially the stuff, instead of just dumping it into a barrel, we have to put each container into a barrel. However tightly you can pack those barrels and then.
Like fifty gallon drum barrel?
Those are what go on the pallet. But it doesn't do us any good to keep it for the next five years sitting in the back of a shipping container.
Yeah, that's exactly what we have to do. We have to, it has to stay in the containers. You put the containers in a fifty-five gallon drum. Then which they provide, you seal the fifty-five gallon drum, you put it on a pallet, you seal the pallet. I don't know what they do with it. I don't care. That's up to them.
Okay. When you have nothing nice to say, don't say anything at all.
Yeah, no, I I was shocked too, but it, yeah. Needs done, doesn't need sitting on our shelves forever.
I mean, I'll work with Jeff. It's, you know, his department has the biggest.
And now we know during the next pandemic, we're not taking any hands handed.
In moderation.
Yes, or divvy it out, so not everybody's buying the stuff.
Well, and we don't have to collect it for the hospitals and everybody in the free world. They can collect their own.
Have we talked to the hospitals to see what they do with all theirs?
But they didn't have that much extra because they were using ours essentially. We we collected it for everybody. And then like gowns and masks and everything else, and then we're.
We are giving it out.
They needed them.
Yeah.
So it's same deal. We still have cases and cases of hospital gowns.
At least those could just go into the landfill. I would think.
The hospital gown. Okay, next workshops.
Okay, I want to thank you for letting us postpone the workshop. It'd be very difficult without Pam.
Yep, future workshop. Fairgrounds project list. I would love to sit down at a workshop. And discuss. Our plans for the fairgrounds going forward. What projects you see needing to be done going out? This ties into that whole duly funds idea. To make sure we're not. We're all on the same page and we're not adopting a big maintenance.
Maintenance or construction?
Can, well, maintenance slash construction on the county dime. Future, eh, future discussion.
Right.
Let's just bring us like a six year plan kind of thing or a long range plan. Of what you see going to need to be done at the fairgrounds in coming years. Cause the last thing I want to do is spend a bunch of money today and then five years from now go, oh, by the way, we need four hundred thousand dollars to fix this thing over here and now we don't have it anymore.
Funny you would say that. We do need four hundred thousand dollars to put a new roof on the beef barn.
So, yeah, we need, we need to discuss all those things before we spend the entire duly funds.
Are we gonna invite the Fair Board to that meeting?
Well, I would like to get an update on what we have going, which can be.
I could.
Just like this, but then I would like to sit down with all of the user groups. Of the fairgrounds, which is not just the Fair Board, it's demolition derby folks as well. And get opinions and ideas. Because that duly fund can be used on anything non rodeo related. And all of the user groups that are using that non rodeo related should have input.
So yes, we're gonna invite the Fair Board to that conversation.
Yeah, well, all user groups, yeah.
So is the Fair Board a user group or, because they kind of, don't they kind of manage that fund?
No, they manage the fair. We manage the fund.
I know we manage the cash flow on it, but don't they usually bring those ideas forward on what?
With duly funds? No, because we never spent duly funds. They only get there, whatever we give them a year and improvements, twenty-five grand.
Yeah, ten grand.
Ten grand. We set aside ten grand and let them pick a project.
Okay, and then they give it back to us.
And then they say, we want you to do this, and then we spend the ten. That's the only part of anything. The duly funds haven't been spent yet.
Right.
The duly funds were left to the county. At the commissioner's discretion on where they're spent. It's just now the Fair Board wants to spend two thirds of them on their project. And I think that needs to be a community.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Okay.
Cause there's more users than one.
So I don't want to be caught in the middle of this, so.
I'm aware.
And so I'm gonna give you the, cause. You know, a while back I was tasked with doing the bid package for the building. The bid package is almost complete. I will finish it today, then I are not today, this week. And I would send it to the Fair Board President, which they will review. I told them they still have to come to you guys to go out to bid. I am not gonna drive that train. I'm not gonna be stuck between the two boards. I know where that goes for me. That's a bad place to be. So I told them they still have to come to you guys to get to go out to bid and. Cause ultimately it'll look like any other bid package the county does except for.
Well, because technically whatever we do with the duly funds will be our project. So I do want all the user groups to have input in what our decision is. But there's a difference between our decision and a user group decision because all the user groups have a different opinion. So they're all gonna have to get on board with the same opinion. I would think, but maybe I'm wrong.
So we'll finish it. I will send it to them. If this is, this is okay with them, I'll send it to them. We'll finish the bid packet. And then again, they'll have to come to you guys to get the ability to go to out to bid, just like we would. Cause I'm not gonna, you know, ultimately we're, Public Works won't run the project for them. Their Fair Board President will run the project. I mean, if we need to step in, we would, but ultimately it's not on any of our lists to do. Again, the board could choose to make the different decisions on that too.
I don't. I I I think that one would entail a legal opinion whether he could run the project or not.
True to some degree. Well, I don't know. It's again, that depends upon how you guys view it.
They're not county.
Right, it depends on.
And or county employees and or so that that could be an interesting question right there.
I mean, ultimately we could run the project. We have the ability.
As I said, I think we would have to, but that's just my.
But again, I was wait, I wanted to get the board's take, because that may not be the project either from, you know.
Okay.
If that's okay, I'll just finish it, get it to him, and then they can bring it forward to you guys at the sky. Well, that will spur the conversation.
Well, I would like to have a discussion before they come in here.
Right, no, no.
Thinking the answers, yes, without ever asking. To know what we plan on spending on the fair going forward and how we're gonna come up with those four hundred thousand dollars to put a new roof on a beef barn.
We'll have the six, we we have, the good thing is we have a six year. So we'll just check in and make sure you've seen some of it. It's a capital non-capitalist. Doesn't include the stuff that may, you know, that we don't know that could happen.
But I'm just thinking if you think of things that are on seven, eight, nine year.
Right, we'll put them on, especially if they're big ticket items. Luckily, the main big ticket item we have left is the beef barn roof. But that is a ticket item that has to be attended to. Fairly soon because the roof blew off a few years ago and the decking is rot. So we went to put the roof back on and it's not as easy as you might think. But anyway, we could talk about that. I will bring that forward. And we will have that for the next budget session too. We'll have that, those lists.
You gonna have like details on the right hand side of it or is it gonna be all like blank, like your public works budget?
What do you mean blank?
Well, everything on the right side is pretty much, we're gonna spend three million and. We're gonna get three million from you and spend three million, but it doesn't have any line items for what you're gonna spend it.
No, the list, the list, the list will show. The list show that, you know, there's these projects and this is what they cost.
All right, we'll talk.
That that it'll show the other stuff. Right, which we never use those. No. Our step's a little different. That's why we give you all the handouts. And put you to sleep. I apologize.
Thanks, sir. Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're back again?
Next up, we have a department update from Planning Director Mochinamback.
Morning.
Good morning.
I was told that you might have some questions for me about the Bluebird solar projects.
Take it away. Your idea. I'm not opposed to it, but.
I'm lost this morning and I've lost my glass. So I'm struggling this morning. So Bluebird, where are we in their application process?
We are still going through the C P process. We did a draft E I S. Back in twenty twenty. Two, because we we issue. Okay, so we did two draft E I S for Bluebird. The first one, we have that ready in December twenty twenty-one. And then we send it out for the public to review and comment. We got comments back. We send that back. We send the comments back to the applicant and their consultant. There are some issues that need to be addressed and some of the issues that was lacking in the original E I S. And so we asked them that we need to incorporate those missing information. And then we we issue a revised draft E I S earlier this year in April twenty twenty-three. Send that out for thirty day comment period. We received the comments back. We send it back to the consultant and the applicant. And they are working on the final E I S to incorporate comments and address issues.
So when is that due back estimate?
This really is no set timeline when that will be back, but I will definitely need to review the draft of the final E I S. Make sure all the concerns are addressed before we can issue the final version, you know.
So I think. Some of the bigger concerns are moving forward after what we saw with the last fire. Where are we with Bluebird so we can ensure we have. Security in those fire. That's still on the table. We can still work on that.
Yes, yes. So we do have like right now in the revised drafts, the second E I S. They have a sample plan in place. They call it the emergency plan and it's taken from another project from Alvin grid. But that stated clearly, that's an example. We we did, the county did receive a site specific. Operational health and safety plan for Len Hill Solar. And that plan was actually received. And that plan was actually received before July. I sent that on to um the Fire Chief and also Emergency Management to review and comment on it. I got some comments back from Jeff King. And I forwarded those comment to Alvin Grid. So essentially, I told them is the site specific. Um health and safety plan. Um meets the minimum requirement that we were asking for at the time. Um it did not give specific about landscaping maintenance onsite, and then those we probably need to pay more attention to and have a more. Um clear conditions in the permit that I learned from this last fire. Um but for the plan in general, we always try, we as the county, as well as the applicant, we always encourage them to have side conversation with. Emergency Management and Fire Chief and all other responders, first responders to address issues and concerns. And and I believe Alvin Grid is going to have a conversation with Jeff King. Um next week, I believe, is to have further conversation on emergency um respond. And I'm asking them to give me like a written summary afterwards. And I'll share that with the board.
Oh, good, because that that's what I was interested in is not being controlling or micromanaging. What's our ability to review things and make sure before we go forward at all that it's gonna satisfy the public and. We won't get entangled in something down the line. Um we, you know, being able to put our two cents in.
Um you're talking about specific plans? Is that what you meant, Commissioner Zola?
Yeah, within within the SEPA document, is there room for us to look at? Comment things, look at the fire plan prior to going out to public. Um and then being kind of trapped in that situation where we're commenting along with the public possibly on that SEPA. Um I would like to be more helpful. I'd like to be on the inside and help as it moves forward to make sure, you know, um. It's a controversial subject, and it was a controversial situation. So I want to make sure we do our best due diligence to make sure we do everything we can do.
So right now, the the draft EIS and appendices and everything are out for the public to comment, and I believe. We probably send a copy of that to the commissioners when we route that during the public process.
It's posted on the website, though, correct?
Yes, okay, yeah. Um and if not of it, you know, for some reason, you can download the documents. You can always let us know, we'll get you a s- some driver, electronic version, whatever the case may be. Um if you like, you you can reveal and and let me know if you have any concerns or comments. The E O C permit, if end up we approving the proposal. A lot of those those mitigations from the EIS will carry over to the E O Z permit. And but we have not issued the E O Z permit, obviously, because we're still going through the SEPA process.
Okay.
So there's still room that we can incorporate some of the conditions and and concerns. To address, you know, anything that you might want to include in the permit.
Okay, so um to follow along, then I can get on the website and I can look at what's posted there. And it's kind of considered a living document, so I can make comments and public make comments on that.
The the draft is be- a EIS constitute of a draft EIS and a final EIS. So you have to read both documents together.
Okay.
The draft is out already.
Okay.
We have not issued the final EIS.
Okay.
So the 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 D E I S for April twenty twenty three is what you want to look at?
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it's the the top thing on the Bluebird Solar Project current documents.
So can you explain the process? To get from here. To them actually getting the permit for construction. So we're obviously into draft EIS, go through the steps for the board.
Okay, so.
That are still gonna take place.
Okay.
On that.
So right now, we need to issue the final EIS when it's ready to issue. Um I don't have an estimated timeline um for discussion purposes, let's say in November. We are going to issue, and this is, I just make this day up. Uh we'll issue the final EIS. There's an appeal period tied to the final EIS. Is, I believe it's twenty one days, if anyone wants to appeal that final EIS. Planning Department cannot issue a permit. Until at least seven days after we issue the final EIS. So hypothetically, we could issue the E O Z permit. This is a land use permit. Does not authorize any construction activities. It just basically saying that. The land use is okay if they meet all those conditions. Then we can issue the E O Z permit. When before they start construction, they put panels that, all that, they will need to get a building permit. And planning department will not be able to sign off on those building permits. Unless they can show they meet the conditions that we spell out on the energy overlay zone permit. For example, they need to have a ROHA agreement signed and executed. I know they have, you know, continued discussions with Public Works, so that may already be, you know, almost ready. But they need to show that they actually have that in place, money in the bank. Before we can sign off on the building permit. We do not need that to to issue the E O Z permit. But we'll need that for us to issue the the building permit, so they can start construction. They might be doing some land disturbing activities. But they likely will need to get a permit with the Department of Ecology. Which count, we, the county, do not have any grading permit approval, so they do not need any permit from us. And so if if anyone see they are moving dirt out there, it's not because we give them authorization. We do not have any authority for them. Um to give them permission to to move dirt or not. They have to get a permit from Ecology. They have other state permit they need to get before they can move dirt. So to speak.
So it, if I'm reading this correctly, at no time their permit. Uh whether they get one or get, don't get one, is gonna come before this board. That's gonna stay in planning. And if we have concerns, we need to bring them up now as part of the draft EIS.
Yes, so we are still going through this public process. If there are concerns that you want to raise, then. We welcome those input.
And you said you don't, just so I'm, I understand, there isn't really a timeline for closing that period for comment. Is there a timeline on that closing when that comment ends?
The comment for the draft EIS is technically closed.
Okay.
Because they do, we do have a thirty days. It it's not like a a living document that you can continue to comment on it. But if there are other concerns that that you want to make sure Planning Department is aware of and and make that be consideration. While drafting the permit, if there's one, then I need to know ahead of time.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead. We can, we can comment and work with you, uh but it isn't still open for public comment.
Um the comment has closed.
Okay.
So you're telling, you're, what you're saying is that the, within the energy overlay zone, a. Project does not ever go in front of the county commissioners for our signature or anything. Cause didn't the previous commission sign off on Lund Hill before we, before any of us were on board?
I think, no, I think all we sign off on is the road hall agreement, the decommissioning plan is all that comes before us.
Correct.
Okay. But 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 the road hall agreement and decommissioning plan come before us.
And um franchise.
If they need it, yeah.
Yes.
Because it's permitted outright in the energy overlay.
Yes, this is administrative permit, so it's signed off by planning staff.
What are you guys thinking?
I'm concerned about the process. Um that's a heavy load for planning to carry without oversight at our level.
Although I think that 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 was the way the E O Z was designed. It was designed to do it all in there, so that these guys had plausible deniability. It didn't have to do a public hearing. It didn't have to be held accountable. It didn't have to. Sign anything.
And for me, that may be, but that's not what's important to me now. And I think we're starting to see unintended consequences, however they're coming out. And I just want to set up the process, so we're sure we're serving the public and doing the right thing. Um and more eyes are better than less.
I agree. I mean, it's, I mean, I look at it that it's kind of like the Title Twelve Road Standards that fit through a Title Twelve Road Standard Board.
Sure.
For a year and a half, and they didn't catch the mistakes that we caught up here that needed, you know, addressed, so. Um I will designate some time to read through the document. I don't know what time, where I'm gonna find said time. Um but um.
Yeah.
If that's our only time to comment on things that are concerning to us. Um we need to make the point to um.
Well, and I'd like to um look harder at that E O Z process and potentially either say, oh, it was an error, it shouldn't be this way. Or do we need to make a correction in it, so we have more involvement? Those, those are big, big projects. Um just like you said, with roads and other projects, and I think we'd better be responsible at our level.
So this is why in January of twenty twenty one, I believe. Uh we passed an ordinance that would require anything that connects to the Knight Road Substation to go through the C U P process. Because that then gives more public input and more public process uh for that, and that was the original idea.
That would have done that regardless on if we made that rule or not. Um we all knew it was going through the C U B, because part of it. Didn't, wasn't in the E O Z. So I would say the only reason we made that resolution was to try to explain it to the public that. And assure the public that that was how it was gonna be done. Um we didn't change anything by making that resolution. It was always gonna be done that way.
Well, if they would have could put all of the solar panels outside of the E, outside of. Inside the E O Z, then they could have went through the administrative process.
I don't know how they would have hooked the power lines up to the.
It's just a franchise agreement.
Yeah, I don't know about that. That would be an interpretation.
But that was, that was to make it very clear that it was adding another layer of. Comment and process in on top of it.
Well, I know we have um more work to do now to look at. Bluebird and where we're at in the process, and if we need to give any comments to Mochi. Um but I would like to add a layer to that, unfortunately, and say we all need to look at the E O Z. And how things are processed. Um I think. There were good intentions when it was all done, but it might be bigger, deeper, wider than anybody ever dreamt up. Or the unintended consequences are now going to show up. And I'd rather amend the process and catch those now than to catch them on the backside. So if you can come back and share comments on what you see in the E O Z. Uh either at workshop or our next session, I would be happy with that.
That is a whole other living document.
I know.
Uh to try to read and get, um I don't know that I can.
It is a document with errors and.
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. Um I just don't know time wise. That I have the time to look through the entire E O, E I S and pick it, pick it apart.
E I S or E O Z?
Yeah.
And and then go look at the E O Z and.
Well, I'll bring you back.
I know there is a ton of stuff that needs updated in the E O Z. That's just a no brainer. The question lies is, how are we gonna update that? And is that something that this board plans to feel like we need to sit down in workshops and update that? Or is that something that we need to, this board feels it wants to pass off to the Planning Commission?
Well, or.
E O Z line by line.
What about a contract? And a contractor could share with you, with Planning Commission and us. I think if we cite specifically a very small project compared to some of the stuff going on. With a pinpoint focus of saying, we want you to work on. What can we do to update the E O Zs? Our process is really competent. We're doing a good job. We're doing our due diligence. Um I would not be opposed to that. I think it'd be money well spent.
So the energy overlay zone is a part of the zoning ordinance.
Yep.
Anytime you amend a zoning ordinance, it required to go through the planning process. That means you need to involve the planning.
Right. Right, and we could hire someone site specific to work with them on solar and work with them on um. E O Z, and then we could get this document to a shape that there's no questions, and we know that. We've really crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, and um there'll be no more.
Yeah, I.
Backlash.
I guess where I'm at is I know there's at least parts or pieces of the E O Z. That need. Cleaned, removed, edited, something, uh updated, whatever terminology you wanna use. Uh the question I have is time constraints.
That's why I was saying a contractor.
With.
For everybody.
Uh how would that work with a contractor with the E O Z?
I don't know what commission is so.
Because it would need to go through the Planning Commission, so a contractor would have to essentially do what you're doing with. The project you're already doing to work on the side to then take that before the Planning Commission. It's still a matter to me of the Planning Commission having enough weekly meetings, monthly meetings, whatever, to go through all of the things she has. The interim zoning ordinance and everything, that will make some amendments to the E O Z. And and then.
When I was on.
Plans and.
When I was on Planning Commission, we had regular, we scheduled meetings. Sometimes when we had things going on and updates twice a month. And beyond that, we broke into workshops, and especially when there were things that were impactful to the west side. Or the other sides, people from the Planning Commission would commit to be on the workshop, and we would. We would, yeah, work work group, and we would meet at the Pioneer Center even. In order to get that participation in between our meetings, so that we could move things forward. Um I think we all saw that in the downfall of the past. Few years and then also during COVID where uh work kind of became a different thing. And I think we need to get back on trap, track, and everybody put their uh time in if we want. Good processes, we're gonna have to.
Right, that's the, unfortunately, I think that's on us to have a priority list for the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Because priority number one to me is the interim zoning ordinance. Um they still have C A O and S M P and in comprehensive plan and and everything else. And now potentially in E O Z. Um so it's, it's a matter of where we prioritize those projects. Um to get them to working on the ones that we think are the most important first and the second important second and.
I guess the next question becomes, um it's been said in here that likely all projects will go through the FSEC process moving forward. Uh if all projects will go through the FSEC process moving forward, would amending the E O Z be on the top of our priority list? With the preemption that FSEC has. And so where can, again, the priorities that you're speaking to, Commissioner Christopher, I think that's a good conversation to have, knowing that. Likely all projects will be moving through FSEC.
Well, if if the likelihood of all projects moving through FSEC, I would move the E O Z to the very top of the priority list then. Um because we need to put whatever regulations we want in place, so that FSEC follows our code. Right now, there are no regulations in there. It's wild, wild west, you might as well say, so they can just rubber stamp whatever they want to rubber stamp, wherever they want to rubber standard. And that is a worry to me, because. Even though we may have a good relationship with some of these companies. If they can get it done easier or cheaper, or don't have to do a road hall agreement or anything like that when they go to FSEC. They might choose to go to FSEC just for the Bickleton projects, not projects that we're trying to stop. Just because it's cheaper for them, and they don't have to do a decommissioning plan, and they don't have to do a road hall agreement. So technically. If that is the case, or ever rears its ugly head, where a a green energy company outside of the moratorium area. Decides it's, it's wiser to go through the FSEC process, I would say this county would need to uh very quickly shift its priorities. Uh to get its. Code up to where this board thinks it should be. Um but yes.
And I agree, uh it's a longevity thing. It's looking to the future. It's not looking right in front of us right now. What you have in front of you right now, too, with FSEC. I believe totally will be challenged. There are errors and uh processes that are not functioning at FSEC. That will be challenged, and there's laws written every day, and laws morph, laws change, process change. And we're going to see that through this solar process from across our state. We we just will.
And I would say the main argument I keep hearing from some people in this county is. Well, it doesn't matter what we do, FSEC has the power to put it in anyway, which is true. Well, it doesn't matter what we do, FSEC has the power to put it in anyway, which is true. So we shouldn't do anything. We shouldn't change our zone. We shouldn't change our rules because that's, it doesn't matter, FSEC can do it anyway. So let's just not do anything. That's the answer and it's, it's, it's. It's not an answer of the people and by the people. It might be of the answer of the special interest, but it, it's not of the answer by the people. So. I'm sorry, I was elected by the people and they want me to do my job and my job is. Um, oversight and comprehensive plans and zoning and that's what we do. And so I'm going to continue to do my job. If the state wants to come in and overpower me, they're allowed to do so by. Um, by R C W, but that shouldn't stop me from doing my job. Um, I'm not going to just roll over and die because that's what's best for. Um, my special interests or my campaign donors. That's just not me, so.
Well, we have a lot of housekeeping to do.
So.
A lot of places.
To, to bring this back around, we sent to the planning commission the direction to look into solar. And that is come up with an interim zoning. Program that it went in front of the planning commission last night, but we also said we were looking for ordinances. And so I thought at the time when we sent the direction to the planning commission, it was to write a solar ordinance that would set standard setbacks and all that stuff. That you would like to see so that when FSEC gets a hold of that, then they would have to fight each one of those. Conditions individually for any project that moves forward, whether it's setbacks or percentages of a community or whatever those are. Uh, density provisions, all that. Um, from what I've seen at the planning commission, it seems like they're focusing on the interim area, not on doing. That which I've said in the past is, has the most amount of force and effect. Is if you actually have an ordinance in place that sets, these are the density provisions, these are the setbacks, this is what we like to see. Because then FSEC has to preempt every one of those things rather than what if you just have a blanket ban, then FSEC can. Preempt that ban. And then they can say, but we're not, these are the conditions we set. If we have an ordinance in place that has all those things, then they have to come in. And the applicant has to show why they won't follow those setbacks and what we've already. And so that was, I thought, our direction months ago to the planning commission, but I may be wrong.
You are. Um, no, they were only looking at inside the boundaries. Um, of the moratorium area, there was talk on the commission, I'm hearing that they wanted to expand out into the E O Z itself. Um, but right now they're working within the scope of the boundaries that we set. Um, with, I'm hearing. When they're done with that, they would like to look at the E O Z overall. Um, but just because you make a setback for Knight Road doesn't mean it should be the same setback at Bluebird. I mean, each area is different based on population density, so there's not going to be just one overall setback number, I wouldn't imagine. Uh, without it being a completely arbitrary. Uh, number shot off their head. So.
Well, and early on when we were talking about um. Charlie management plan and critical area ordinance, you had suggested that. It would come to this table for signature, but before it went forward, you would want a capable firm to look at that and give you their. Unab. Polluted. Bird's eye view of that for you to say, yes, this is good or yes, this is not. And that's what I'm saying about the E O Z. And if we take a. Look at that document with a separate firm that's just totally focused on that and that becomes what they look at. And we work through that with them as commissioners. By the time we get through. Planning commission doing their effort on this smaller area, we would be ready to fit. Everything back together and know that our E O Z is in a place that. We're managing it correctly and it's going through a process that we know it gets every look it gets to make sure we do the right thing for the public. Then we can say to them, sure, create these ordinance, create these things and we'll fit them into the E O Z. But as is with the process, I'm uncomfortable with the E O Z and how these things. Are kind of just going down the line um. And to make sure we don't have another unintended consequence. I want to tighten it down a little bit. I want to wire it down and make sure that process is what it needs to be. And maybe I'll be totally wrong and maybe the process. Only needs to be adjusted a small amount and that's fine, we'll move on. But. There are things in there that I've found I really want someone to work on.
Right.
And we don't have time to wait.
Right.
It's always wait.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree. I guess my, my worry would be the consulting firm that we hire. Um, and. They, they aren't necess, I mean, they're working for us, but they're working for the planning commission, so they would be off. Recommending changes and edits and whatnot based off. Who's guidance?
Um, working with Mochi and us as a team. I want to see what the suggestions are and how we could change that.
So would be kind of like, for instance, like the C A O, it would be.
Just like.
The watershed group and Moshi, but actually meeting in front of us and not doing it.
Correct, we'd be involved like we are with Title Twelve. And Jeff brings up updates and we comment and it goes back to Jeff.
Mochi, can you give, remind us on the process of updating zoning and legislation and those changes?
Yeah, so. The, the process that I know is. Planning staff who work with the planning commission and I believe the planning commission acts as the advisory board to the planning department. So we work together. And we have a proposal that went through the public hearing process. Planning commission take testimony, planning staff work on the C P A process. And then we have a recommendation that we can bring it to the board for your final. Review and approval. At that time, you can have your own public. Hearing if you don't want to summarily accept a planning commission recommendation. But in essence, you put your trust into planning staff and the planning commission to do some part of the work, the majority of the work for you. For you to, to go through that process.
Correct, and that's the way I understand the process, the way it's spelled out by the legislature. But whatever the planning commission comes back with, they can say. You know, the color's blue, the number's a hundred. Uh, and we can say we don't like that at all. The color's now red, the number's twenty five and. We have every authority to do everything against their wishes if we so choose.
Correct.
But we have to go through that process to let them do the initial. Do the initial work, so that's the hard part of me of the, the oversight. I don't mind having the. Consultants, you might say, working on the E O Z part of it. With Moshi and somebody else because that's. She's not going to have the time because she's doing all the other things.
Correct.
So I don't mind that idea, just like she's using the watershed company for the C A O, using something else for an E O Z. But again, I don't know how much we get oversight other than. Directing staff, what we would like to see come out of it. Um, so that they're at least on the right page with the planning commission. Um, and then we get back what we get back from the planning commission and that's just like we did with the Title Twelve Road Board. And then it's time for us to sit here and say, okay, now this ain't gonna work or this will or whatever. Um, at the end of that process.
If you do want to update the E O C, you also need to look at the comprehensive plan. Because that was also a part of it. To input the E O Z implement, the comp plan that was changed in two thousand and four, two thousand and five. So you, you need to look at the guidance document. And if the policy direction change, we need to update the comp plan as well or for that section anyway.
Which is fine.
Right, I guess the problem we have is board. Is this board. Let's be honest, feels the comp plan is old and outdated, feels the E O Z needs to be updated. We're fine with updating all these documents. The problem is, is we understand how slow government is. And it's going to take two, three years to get these things done. We all might not be sitting here in two or three years. And or the whole valley and the whole county could be completely covered in solar panels in two or three years if we just sit here and wait for. Government to work as slowly as it does updating its plans. So we're trying to, I think what I'm getting is we're trying to put some assurances in. That we're not going to be overrun with solar panels while we wait to update. The policies of people that are no longer here.
And it isn't, it isn't just solar for me. Mochi mentions comp plan. We're. I can't even say the word for how behind we are on all these different planning issues. And it's got to stop. We have to take action somewhere and even if we take it in pieces and chunks rather than saying. Okay, now we're diving into the comp plan and we take that on. At least divide it down into pieces and chunks and start getting it moving. And if that means the E O Z is one of those first chunks. And then I also believe the S M P and everything else all comes together and we're working on all of those. We, we have to start taking some action. We can't.
And I agree and I'm, I'm at the point now where we were looking for a. Uh, planning employee and somebody to help and that didn't happen and. We can only get so much out of Moshi. She can only do so much on these big giant four things. That the only way we get it done faster is to. Bring in consulting companies to take pieces.
Yep.
Um, and remove some of that workload.
And staff is hard to come by. If we can't have staff, then we need to find competent help.
This, this is a great conversation and an app conversation for the time because. If you're asking to update the E O Z and you're going to bring in a. A firm, an outside firm to work on the E O Z with the size and the depth of that. It is, we need to have a very firm discussion about the cost of that. And you're looking at potentially multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars if you're going to use an outside firm to revamp the E O Z. Um, that needs to be built into our budget that we're already a million dollars still in the hole. And we need to, to focus on those, those issues. From my perspective, um. Why I think the, the S M P and C A O are highly technical documents that have. A lot of. Um. Background that goes into them. I mean, when you look at the, the background of information for best available science that goes into them. It's, you know, a package like this and the. Consulting firm is very good at working through all of that and implementing that and working with staff. When it comes to like the E O Z. That's, that's a one-off thing that was created in the state that really nobody else has ever done. And, and so if you bring a consulting firm in, I worry that we're going to spend up. Multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars for something that's a legislative action that the. Planning commission should be tasked with. We would like to see updates to sections. One point five, one point eight and two point three. Can you work on this over the next course of the next three months, build it into your workshops? And we could save multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars to deal with your concerns that we don't need to bring an outside consultant in. Because it seems like we've got. Poor Mochi is run ragged at the end of her rope that this is. We continue to pile more and more stuff on and I think we have to be cognizant of what we can and cannot do to our staff.
And do we still have an out? We don't have an application out for a senior planner any longer.
We remove, we remove all posting on the website. Because it's been posting for over a year and we don't really have qualified applicants.
But you did get applications.
We did.
So the two options are. Um. Whether we would Commissioner Anderson's option, whether we ourselves look at the E O Z and recommend updates to this section, this section, this section, this section. Or whether your recommendation would be hire an outside consultant. Um, sit down with them, explain what our concerns are, what we're trying to protect going forward. Uh, and turn them loose to um. Look at it. Um, and work with planning department, uh, planning commission to give a recommendation. I understand your concern over money. Money is money and in this county, we frivolously throw money around like it's going out of style. Um, and pay contractors a million dollars more than we should. Um, but we won't get into the Courtney Road project. Um. So there is money. Um, it's just how we choose to spend the money. Uh, whether we want to replace air conditioners that aren't broken or whether we want to fix an E O Z that is broken. It's all about choices. Um, and I have no problem. Uh, if Miss Silver would like to uh try an outside consultant to speed up the process. Because I am very worried. That there are entities in our county that are trying to drag out the processes as long as possible. Um, in hopes of a nuck election change. Um, so that they can do nothing going forward. So the faster we can work on this, the better for me and we can find money in the budget.
I would. Uh, I know I'm not exactly sure exactly what the, the issues with the E O Z are that you, you're bringing up, but I don't know if you feel that this. Is an emergency and you also have the other option that you can pass interim zoning to rescind the E O Z. Um, or push it off. So there's, there's more than just those two options.
Well, I think there's a lot of time, energy and money spent on the E O Z with good intent and I think. Like I said, every document and every law at some point in time gets polished up. And we've seen already what happened because the E O Z was not updated when it was asked. To be updated in two thousand eighteen by our planning director. And it went. South and nobody ever spoke about it again. So after that many years, I think we need to finally. Do what was asked of the commissioners from two thousand eighteen and we can see why, because of the situation we're in now. And as far as money, we're spending untold dollars because it wasn't in the shape it needed to be in. To move through the processes now in a bad form. Rather than cleaning up our stuff and doing work the correct way. Protect the public and, and move forward the public interest. I'm not saying yes, solar, no solar. I'm saying I want our process cleaned up.
Yeah, I am not entirely opposed to all factions of the E O Z.
Right.
I just think they did not think about large scale solar when they drafted it. Um, and you know, when the guy who drafted it goes on the record multiple times saying they didn't think about large scale solar, well, maybe we probably should about now. And maybe they should have in two thousand and eighteen. Um, so there's no reason to, in my opinion. Block it, throw it out interim, you know. But we do need to as quickly as possible. Um, go through it and tweak the things that need to be tweaked. Um, the problem is, is I don't know that you can just go in there and just look at this section, look at this section, look at this section. Um, without it being. Again, without hiring an outside consultant, I think we just put more workload on staff that already doesn't have the time to get the projects that we want done. Um, so if we could bring on a consultant that can work with her that she can say, hey, go do this. And then they can go, go do that. That speeds up the amount of time we can get it in front of the planning commission and speeds up the process. We would just have to be willing to fund that person, that consultant. Um, and again, I don't personally see the um. The issue with dollars because there's plenty of dollars in that budget if this board wants to spend it accordingly. Uh, which so far they've chosen not to spend the budget.
Talking about spending money, um. There's ways to sue on both sides and if you leave that document. Um, unamended and. Not in the shape it needs to be in, you could face a suit that will cost us a lot of money in the future in that document. It was supposed to be a shining document, the first one in the state, the only one in the state. And my thoughts are, if we leave it as it is. It's going to go down in flames and everybody else in the state is going to say, great idea, Click Attack County. Look what happened because you left the barn door open and you needed to clean that document up.
Well, the other counties are kind of already laughing at our E O Z and so.
And I'd like to clean it up, is all I'm saying and.
Are you?
Speaking of unintended consequences, I believe the first time the E O Z went through, there actually was lawsuits and there were settlements. And so we did spend a lot of money on that. And so. Speaking of the unintended consequences, we should also factor in the legal bills associated with. Or settlements associated with amending that. I'm just saying for the budget wise, when we're designing our budget.
Well, I'm not too worried about. Um, budgeting in legal consequences because there's no way the document's going to get done next year and legal challenges will make it through a court. To make payouts next year. Any legal consequences will be in a future budget, not the twenty twenty four budget, so. Are you, um, so? Are you, um, so I'm on board with your um, looking at hiring an outside consultant. Do you, how do you want to go about that? Do you want to make a motion? Or do you just want to verbally, uh, give staff a recommendation to look for outside uh, consulting and bring back a recommendation and cost?
Yes, uh, probably a motion to make sure.
Want me to prepare an R F Q for this process? And would that include to updating the E I S associating with the E O Z? Cause when I need to write the scope of work for this R F P or R F Q. We need to spell out what we want this person to do. To amend the E O C and the real, you know, the um, associate sections in the comp plan. We did a environmental impact statement for this proposal. And so I would assume this consultant will also be updating that E I S in conjunction to making any amendment to this E O C. Is that what you intended to do? So I need to know how to write that.
Can I look at that and get back with suggestions? Of what I think the scope should be for the contractor.
Yeah.
I'd like to look at the O Z first.
I would really, really like to put sideboards on this thing. Cause you could easily get scope creep where this is a multimillion dollar project with amending the E I S. When we look at what we're paying right now on an E I S that the county's been managing, we're upwards of two million dollars.
That's why I asked the question.
So.
And which, which E I S were you talking about?
There was an E I S for the E O Z. So that it could streamline the process. So that the uh, friends of the friends groups couldn't sue on, based on E I S for everything.
And unfortunately, when I read that document. The settlement agreement said that solar would be appropriate in the E O Z. But it would be each solar project would have its own independent E I S.
Which they do.
And that was the whole challenge. Um, and so I think if we're looking for unintended consequences and cleaning things up. I'm not afraid of somebody coming in and challenging us for leaving something wide open. I think the challenge was because the barn door was left open. So they challenged us and said, no. You, we, you will settle, but you will do an E I S or you won't have an E O Z.
Okay, so, um, I guess if I can make a recommendation. I would say look at the U S E. Uh, maybe schedule some time and sit down and, and talk to Moshi. And bring your ideas and, and then listen to her concerns and or the scope of what it would take. To look at something like that and or the ramifications. Uh, figure out some kind of, uh, a presentation uh, to then come back before us with a, with an ask of what you're looking for. If you guys can sit down and.
Yeah, I'll call you into what time you have. Sure.
Okay.
That was a great resolution. Do we have more? Cause I have questions for Mochi.
Good.
Um, I understand that there was the, uh, Carriage Soldier Solar went in front of FSEC. And FSEC made determinations. Um, I've heard lots of different versions in the community of what is, has occurred and what FSEC ruled on. Could you give us an update from the planning director's position? Position of what was ruled and what that means for the county?
I believe they made a, they essentially, um, make a determination that the Carriage Project is consistent with local land use and zoning. So that part is completed. Now they are waiting for Carriage to provide additional information so they can make a SEPA determination. If, because they have the land use consistency, um, determined. Now it's up to the, the SEPA process, which is they are trying to make a determination on. If N up is a determination of significance, that means the E I S will be required. Then, um, Cypress Creek will not be able to go through the expedited process. But if they are going to make a threshold of determination of non-significance or mitigated determination of non-significance. And they already have the land use consistency reveal determined. Then potentially Cypress Creek can go through the expedited review process. Um, so it's just that the process is a little different.
So they deemed the whole project consistent and not just the part that was inside the E O Z.
Correct. He's the condition number two. If I read that document that's posted online and this is just my own observation. I did not talk to anybody. Um, essentially they are just saying that the portion that is not within the E O Z. They will be, um, able to process through by the county's conditional use permit process. So essentially FSEC will provide an opportunity akin to the county C U P process. But that's not mean they'll kick the project back to the county for us to go through the C U P process. My read to this is they will still be the lead agency processing through this application. And does not require to go through any of the county permitting.
So for something that would never make it, I'm hypothetically speaking. A project that would never make it through our own county C U P process. FSEC's going to create its own little C U P board. And hear the case and say, yes, it's good to go and rubber stamp it through. Uh, which is why we need to have all of our stuff updated so that it makes it a little harder for them to do that in the future.
Would you respond? Are they going to create their own little board? Is that how you understood it?
I think FSEC is acting like a one-stop permitting agency. That will, they will just take on every other involved agencies, departments. And then they will just be the main person. Process through those requirements under this FSEC. As, uh, the site certification agreement process. So I do not believe they necessarily need to create their own board. But they will, you know.
They will be the ones hearing the C U P, not our local people.
Where did you get that interpretation though? Or is that your idea that you think that's how they'll go? Because this is how they processed in the past. Because when I read that, it said, go through the C U P process and the one third of the process. Project, uh, that was outside the O Z, but it didn't define who or what. One could have assumed the county C U P process, or one could have assumed the FSEC C U P process. So is this an assumption?
That is my.
Oh, gee, I can answer that if you'd like.
Oh, sure.
So I had a conversation yesterday, a phone conversation with Amy Halfenmiker from FSEC. Because I wanted to hear it from the horse's mouth of what that's actually determined. Cause I'd heard different things on the radio and in the public and I wanted to know. And, and what she told me on, on the phone was that they made a determination that it was consistent with our local land use plans. And I said, well, what about the areas outside of, uh, the, the uh, energy overlay zone? I heard that that wasn't determined, uh, that, that wasn't consistent. She said, no. They had ruled on the document that was presented online that it is consistent with all of our local land use plans. They will not be coming back to the county for any C U P process or anything else. Uh, she did say though, that in its online, that the, uh, the director of FSEC sent a letter to Carringer that at this current time, they are looking at a D S, which is a determination of significance, which is a little different than we heard in the room last week. Um, and so I want to make that clear and that D S would, would require an E I S. By requiring the E I S, you are not on the path for the expedited processing and you have to go through the adjudication process. And so that was the direction that it's currently had. The company has uh, time to try to find mitigations for those two things. And those two things that we're requiring the D S are number one, the visual impacts. And number two was the cultural resources, primarily the T C Ps, the tradition, the cultural properties, traditional cultural properties. And that is where they are at currently. They do not know whether the company is going to try to push for an M D N S or if the company is just going to go through the full E I S process. Um, and I made the comment, well, you know, all projects that have gone through the county that are currently going through the county, we require an E I S. And in my public testimony, I was pushing for a fully I S, which would then of course kick it out of the expedited processing, allow for more public comment. That's the direction. And so, um, unless they can somehow get over that huge hurdle of the T C Ps with the tribes. It will have to go through the adjudication process. And that was the update that I was given.
That I don't have an update because I'm not on my weekly phone calls with FSEC. But that is the direction and the understanding I got from the phone call and the understanding I got that FSEC would not be asking the county or anything and or coming back to the county with any needs that we would ever have to sign off on. Uh, they're going to do their own little baby. Now, the, the funny thing in that uh, meeting to me was when they were asking the lawyer about consistency and then my child's came back and asked about the moratorium and how that is not an interim zoning uh, control that led up to the interim zoning ordinance. And the lawyer for FSEC um, pretty much said that, that's, uh, that question would be up for debate. Um, in a sense uh, on whether the moratorium actually means something or whether it doesn't. And he's going to take the side of it doesn't. So technically it kind of, uh, left a, a taste in my mouth that somebody could easily say it did. Uh, and you could have that legal discussion in a court, whether we could get somebody to have that legal discussion in a court's a different matter, but I think that's the direction. The only direction this county has at this point is argue the validity of the moratorium. And I guess I would say force that hand or force that opinion to be public.
So are you, are you asking or advising that we hire an attorney to sue FSEC in their determination of consistency?
No, I'm, I'm advising that we ask our county council to, um, sue FSEC on the grounds of moratorium being a land use decision. Um, in fight on behalf of the moratorium. Um, whether he wants to do it himself or hire outside counsel is up to him. I'm not asking for outside counsel again, if he's willing and able to do it.
Have, have, have we got a P A opinion request on that that we asked for months ago? Did, did we not? I.
On the legality of the moratorium?
On, on whether or not the moratorium, um, cause I don't know if we've seen it in writing, but, um, I believe that it was, it's been stated, um, unequivocally that, that there's two court cases that showed that the moratorium is, that FSEC used in their documents to show that the moratorium is not a land use decision. The county has since created the interim zoning and so for all projects going forward. They will look at that and they will of course determine that is inconsistent with our local land use. But again, all of this goes in front of whether or not it's for expedited processing. And hopefully, uh, with the.
So if you're, you, there was like 12 things in there. If you're asking whether we've asked for an attorney opinion on FSEC's arguments based on the court cases you're talking about. I, I don't know that that's ever been asked. Um, if you're asking about, uh, legality of the moratorium, I know there was a verbal answer. Uh, about how since Commissioner Soder didn't find it to be an emergency, Commissioner Zoller isn't allowed to. Um, and how we deemed that there was no emergency present, so there can't be now. Um, and I would like to, I guess, if we have to reexamine that question and ask for the evidence um, that was used or the witness statements that were given, uh, to the prosecutor to get him to form that legal opinion. If that's the legal opinion he still wants to use.
So you want to write a P A opinion request on whether or not FSEC's determination of consistency is, is based on the moratorium or whether or not we have legal grounds to sue with that interpretation. Is that, I'm trying to, trying to work this P A opinion request out that's logical.
I would like to, I would like for this board to, um, ask the prosecutor to sue. And if he chooses not to, then we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
What are you suing them for?
But I believe that the moratorium is a uh, we can't just make an interim zoning ordinance without doing more time first. Moratorium is the first step in land use decisions and land use changes. The moratorium has been in this county consistently used as the first step to make zoning changes, whether it's the pop moratorium or anything else. All we were doing is going through the process provided by the legislature to get zoning changes. So technically, just like anything else, it should hold up. And that's why I'm saying it would be debatable. And I just think FSEC knows that this county won't file the suit. So let's just push it, push it on through and um, I'm, I'm not going to get into further debates.
Director Lynn, is that correct that you?
I'm not going to put her on the spot of answering legal opinion either.
No, no, I'm not asking a legal opinion. You made a statement. I'm asking. Uh, you made the statement that a moratorium is the first process. The question I have for you is can you uh, propose interim zoning at the same time you propose a moratorium or can you do either of them differently? Separately.
Let me look into this and I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Um, so for me, I know we had back and forth conversations and debates and run it through the gamut on the moratorium and its validity. I know there was verbal opinion and I believe there was one written opinion from the P A that he did not believe the moratorium was legal. But I think he based that. If I remember in evidence for the one case where they passed the moratorium after the fact, when the application was laid down. So that didn't hold water, of course. I would like to, um, re-ask that question, but I would like him to, um, I'd like it put in the document when we're asking him that he, he explained the evidence to me. Give me R C Ws, give me cases. Give me what makes that legal opinion legal. I, I need to know. I'm not just one that just takes an answer and says, okay, sure. Um, I want to know and any legal opinion quotes those things. So I'd like to go back to him with that question about the moratorium. Before we move to sue, so we know what his opinion is, if it holds water or not, and why.
Because that's me. I would like to know the R C W in the, or the legal findings of the court that you're referring to.
Correct.
If you're stating your case based off conversations that you've had, I would like to know either who the conversation you had with or what they said. Um, so I know that you're actually basing your legal findings based on a true statement and not on something that's complete baloney. Um, because, um, a lot of times people give statements that are absolute baloney. So I want to know what you're making your findings off of.
So which direction are we going? Are we going, somebody going to make a motion to ask the prosecutor to sue FSEC or is somebody going to make a, uh, ask a P A opinion request on whether or not we can sue FSEC?
I'm not worried about suing FSEC. I'm worried about the moratorium. And where we're at in our county with the county's opinion of that moratorium. I want to know fact and truth. Where that's at before I even think about another question.
All right, let me, I would recommend then that I'm willing if, if the board so chooses to allow me to. Uh, in the next day or two, by Thursday, have this discussion again and I will draft a, uh, legal, uh, request. And all of the individual questions, uh, that we have um, that might at least, um.
I'd like to make the moratorium request fairly specific though. I don't.
It's gonna have.
Okay, thank you.
And that's why I'm saying it's. And that's why I'm saying it's going to have to be specific, it's gonna have to be. Uh, question saying, please cite your sources. Uh, what statements did you receive? Um, every, everything you used to make your legal opinion, we want to know how you got to that legal opinion.
Um, cause I have to know what ground I'm standing on before I make any other decision.
Because that's kind of like the interim zoning ordinance, legal opinion, there was. Uh, it was evident that. Part of the legal opinion was based on the conversation that he had with someone, where the someone gave him incorrect information. Um, while if you're making your legal opinion based on testimony from one person and that testimony is wrong, then your legal opinion is wrong. Um, so be ready to say who you got your information from. Now, I don't know that he will. But uh, those will be the questions. Uh, and I might draft something up for the. Interim zoning ordinance too, and we can look at it and discuss it.
Okay.
Cause I have the same.
So I'll make a time with Mochi and bother Mochi and, and um. It, you'll draft the moratorium question. So I think for me, that covers the subject.
Uh, not to jump down any further down this rabbit hole, but it's not twelve o'clock yet. Um, the last I knew, uh, Commissioner Zoller, you're going to do further looking into the possibility of hiring outside legal counsel. And um, have you had a chance to do that? And where is the direction of the board at this time? Because it seems like we're definitely walking down a certain path.
I don't, I don't think there's any pre-thought of a certain path, Jake, and I, that's a conversation we can have anytime. Um, I'm happy with the path we're on. I'm happy with working with Mochi and moving towards doing good work on the E O Z if we need to do it. And I'm happy to wait to hear the prosecutor's um, answer to that moratorium question. That's the information I need before I can go further to think about anything else.
This was, this was regarding uh, the outside legal counsel for the Carriage or process. So, so you're good with asking a P A opinion request and still moving down that path? Cause I know, I, I'm trying to give Commissioner Christopher all the, the due diligence of his statement that he would like to move forward with hiring outside legal counsel. He's waiting for that second vote. Um, and so I want to make sure the direction we're going is.
No.
You're getting that, so.
I think we need these answers before we think about anything else.
All right, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, sir. But I will say that I do not have weekly phone calls with FSEC.
Um.
Is there anything else on our list that we need to get to? We've spent a lot of time on this and Mochi's been in her chair for a while.
No, I just want to be clear, I'm not going to do anything until I have that conversation further with Commissioner Zoller.
Correct. Work with her, go through that process, explain that process, the scope, the cost, the whatever. Um, and then she will come back with a recommendation. I do. Think I, I do agree, we need to have um, an outside consulting firm helping us on that project. Just like we have them helping us on all the other projects to speed that process along. It's a matter of what's the scope? And do we just hand the document to them and say, have at her? Or do we pick what items in there we really want you to focus on, kind of a scenario? Um, and whether we redo the entire SEPA that's attached to that document um, or not.
Okay.
So, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mochi. Are you ready for a motion, sir?
Uh. No board pending?
Yeah, it's weird that the board pending was in the morning, not in the afternoon.
Probably because they saw we had so much time on our morning schedule to.
Oh. Uh, well, we can, we can always uh, add a board pending at the end when we adopt the agenda.
Anybody get a legal response back on the trucked water that's been in for a few months? Nobody's seen a, nobody's seen that document back?
The last I knew, um, we'd uh, commit or. Environmental Health Manager Kavanaugh had drafted a policy for trucked water.
Um, no, we've talked about this a couple of times, that he drafted a policy, he sent it over for our opinion on. Do you see any problems with this or should I submit it for review? He waited forever, apparently he didn't get a response back from some of us. I brought it up to the board that he hasn't got a response back and we were told. It, I was told at that meeting that it was fine to submit for review the way it was, so that was the direction he was given. That was a while ago, I guess I could check with him to make sure it was submitted. But I was under the opinion that it got submitted then. Uh, and then we haven't heard back, so I guess I will reach out to him and make sure when it was submitted and the date it was submitted. Uh, and then we'll know more.
But I mean, the way, the direction we were going is, is that it's, we're, we're creating in essence administrative procedure. Um, for trucked potable water and, and that's a policy rather than an ordinance. And so, I mean, once that's the policy, anybody who wants to come in can do that. Um, and we don't memorialize policy like that, at least the board.
Are you saying you don't know why we would need a legal opinion?
No, I, I mean, I, if he sent the legal opinion, it'd be nice to know and if they have problems, then maybe we might have to go through that. I, I don't know, I, I have not got an update from Mr. Kavanaugh, but we can definitely put him on the agenda to have an update. On where it's at, where that policy is.
Yeah, let me reach out to him and um, I'll send him an email. Um, see if you can get a response back and I'll let you guys know this afternoon if I can get a response that quick, if not, it'll be tomorrow or Thursday on where we are. Um, and when he sends that response back, I'll send it to Alyssa and she could just forward it to the. And you can read it straight from the horse's mouth and not for me.
Right. Are you?
Um, I have nothing else. Pardon it?
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to recess for lunch.
And I second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to recess for lunch back at one o'clock, any discussion? Hearing. Hearing, uh, all those in favor of recessing for lunch, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.